Hello, C.C. Antipolo! Samahin niyo kami magpuri sa ating Panginoon.[26.24][26.84](Musika)
Di manghangamba sa kawalan pagpapalamoy, laging laan di matatakot sa panganib. Pagkat naririan ka palagi, di matitinag sa pagsubok ang pagsama mo'y tiyak at lupos, di mapipigil sa pag-awit. Pagkat ikaw ay mabuti, pagkat ikaw ay mabuti. Ikaw ang laking pastor hindi matukulang, sapat na at higit pa. Ang biyaya mo'y sagana at tumaapaw, sapat na at higit pa. Sapat na sa lahat kong pangangailangan, higit pa sa lahat kong inaasahan. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na at higit pa. Oh, 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 oh. Di manghangamba sa kawalan pagpapalamoy, laging laan di matatakot sa panganib. Pagkat naririan ka palagi, di matitinag sa pagsubok ang pagsama mo'y tiyak at lupos, di mapipigil sa pag-awit. Pagkat ikaw ay mabuti, pagkat ikaw ay mabuti. Ikaw ang laking pastor hindi matukulang, sapat na at higit pa. Ang biyaya mo'y sagana at tumaapaw, sapat na at higit pa. Sapat na sa lahat kong pangangailangan, higit pa sa lahat kong inaasahan. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na at higit pa.
Turo na nga Panginoon, ikaw lang, sapat na at higit pa. Wala na kaming ibang nanaysum pa sa pagnasayon ng lahat Panginoon. Kaya purihin pa Panginoon at sambahin. Halleluya.
Ikaw ang laking pastor hindi matukulang, sapat na at higit pa. Ang biyaya mo'y sagana at tumaapaw, sapat na at higit pa. Sapat na sa lahat kong pangangailangan, higit pa sa lahat kong inaasahan. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na. Ikaw ang laking pastor hindi matukulang, sapat na at higit pa. Ang biyaya mo'y sagana at tumaapaw, sapat na at higit pa. Sapat na sa lahat kong pangangailangan, higit pa sa lahat kong inaasahan. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na. Wala nang mahiling papagka ikay sapat na, ikay sapat na at higit pa. Oh, oh, oh.
Ikaw lang Panginoon, sapat na at higit pa. For our opening prayer, Brother Ronald Aguilar.
O Lord, our powerful and loving Father, that always guide and protect us, who always show miracle in our lives, who showers us with mercy and forgiveness forever. We come to you at this moment asking for your blessings. May you bless this time together. Bless us with your words and message. Overwrite the preparation of Pastor Doc. June Domingo. We pray that the Holy Spirit can open our hearts and mind to learn and put into action your message tonight. We pray for an orderly program and fast internet for all participants in this gathering. We also pray for the team who organizes this weekly program. May you, Lord, always protect and guide them in their plans to give honor and glory to your name. And for all of us that is present here, may we all continue our faith in our Lord Jesus Christ, that we always hope in miracles, big or small, in our everyday life, so that the people around us will be encouraged and we become the salt and light in these days of COVID pandemic. All this we ask in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. May I also say amen.
Good evening everyone. In behalf of Robert Wang, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our speaker for tonight. He is not new to majority of us since he has been with us since the start of our Miracles book study. But for our first timers here, our speaker tonight is a physician by profession, a specialist in the field of gastroenterology. He is happily married to a very loving wife, Mom Gigi, a father to four good-looking sons, and a proud lolo to two cute and beautiful granddaughters. He is also currently the overseer of C.C.F. Antipolo. Friends, romanticos, we know you are all excited to hear God's message for us tonight. So, we will not keep you from waiting too long. Let's all prepare our hearts and minds as we welcome on our screen the very diligent, dynamic, and dedicated servant of our lot, the look of C.C.F. Antipolo, Dr. Felix June Domingo.
Thank you, Cis Beng. Thank you for such a loving introduction. Nakakatuwaan naman po. And as I see all of you expectant people, excited for our book study on romance, thank you for being with us tonight. Karina po nagtanong kami, meron po bang newcomers? Because we would just like to welcome you. Meron po ba? Maybe you could like to raise your hand probably, or mag raise ng hand, and just make yourselves known to us na you're new here. Okay, thank you, Roben. Thank you for being with us this evening. And if meron pa pong medyo nahihiya dyan, please. Yan, nako pasyente ko pa po 'yung isang nagre-raise ng hand, si Tatay Elpidio Gamboa. Good evening po sa inyo lahat, C.C.F. Antipolo family and friends. Welcome po to our Miracles. Now, as I mentioned, meron po tayong mga quiz kasi we would just like to see if you've been reading. Sino po sa inyo ang nagbasa nung topic natin tonight? Chapter 3 and Chapter 4. Meron po ba raise hand po tayo? Nagbasa in advance. Wow, praise God, may mga diligent students talaga of the Bible. And thank you, thank you for reading in advance kasi we really would like to encourage you to read in advance so that you can truly, truly namnamin, namnamin 'yung ating message every Wednesday. And I asked if you read, kasi po, my job, my task this evening is very, very difficult. My task this evening is very difficult in the sense na, I know I am going to cover one and a half chapters for you tonight, and I'm going to tackle one of the most important parts of the Book of Romance. Kinakabasa po. Were you inspired? Were you blessed? Dito sa chapters 3 and 4 na binabasa natin because everything that we have learned about our salvation can be summarized in these verses that we're going to discuss tonight. And I know you are excited, so maybe I'll just go on. Maybe I've picked your interest and curiosity, okay? So, you know, this is our main verse that folk, that centralizes the entire message of the Book of Romance, or Paul's letter to the Church of Rome. And this is our memory verse. Remember, this was our memory verse the first time I was with you. So maybe we can recite this all together. Romans 1:16 to 17, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel; for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek. For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, but the righteous man shall live by faith." And my friends, this is the focal point of the Book of Romance. And Paul wrote this for three main reasons. Number one, to clarify the gospel. Two, to unite the church, as I mentioned when I introduced the book. That time in Rome, there were the Gentiles, who were major part of the church, and then the Jews, who were initially removed from Rome, suddenly came back, and there was a little friction. Hindi mo sinamakaway, but there was a little friction regarding the Gentiles and the Jews of that time. And the third is to reveal God's righteousness. This is the threefold reason why the Book of Romance was written by our beloved Paul. And as I said in my talk, these are the main words that we will always see in the Book of Romance. The power of God, the power of God to create, to judge, to punish, but also to save and to give life. And the righteousness of God is summarized in one person only, and that is in Jesus alone. And that we are saved from sin, from death, from hopelessness, from meaninglessness, and from hell. How? By faith. By believing alone and shown by our obedience. So this is how we started Rome, the Book of Romance. And then, we heard our beloved Pastor Mark, who was with us for the past three Wednesdays. And then, the news wasn't so good at all. We talked about God's wrath, God's wrath. And that is despite God's eternal power and divine nature clearly seen. You know, when I was driving back home before this talk, I was in Cardona Rizal doing rounds on my patients. And going back home, I saw the sunset. My goodness, what a beautiful sunset, the orange-colored sky. And I said, "Lord, how can I not worship you with this sunset?" But despite this eternal power and divine nature that all man has seen. And number two, despite the conscience that is planted in each and every one of us, even the Gentiles. And number three, despite God's law has been fully revealed to the Jews, man would not worship God, instead worship idols. And I think this was the summary of Pastor Mark's talk. All the things led to one major problem. We did not love God first. And that is why God's wrath is waiting for all of us. But you know what? In the Book of Romance, Paul also mentioned that because sa tikas ng ulo natin, God abandoned us. Abandon hindi maibig sabihin iniwanan, but he said, "He let us live the way we want to." Pinabayaan niyang sige, kung ganyan ang gusto niyo, hindi ko ipipilit ang sarili ko sa inyo. And that's why it's so beautifully written when Paul mentioned to us three ways that God has abandoned man. But the most important, the first thing it said here is, "God abandoned man to their heart's desires, which are shameful." It all started with sins of the heart. But since our heart's desires are shameful and our hearts does not seek God first in our lives, God abandoned man to the body's degrading passions and immorality. And as our hearts suddenly loses its love for the Lord, and we decide, "Lord, I want to do these things because this is seductive, the last of my eyes and the last of my flesh." Eventually, God abandoned man to our foolish thinking and our depraved minds. Because of that, because of God's wrath and God's abandonment, God's judgment is resting on our heads right now. Although Paul said, which is true, "God is wonderfully kind, tolerant, and patient, but we are stubborn. We refuse to turn from sin." And Paul also told us that listening alone to God's law is not enough. I mean, knowing God's law and listening to it is not enough. In fact, merely obeying the law without a change of heart because it all started with the heart, it's still not enough. And that is why one day, one day, God will come to judge us through the Lord Jesus Christ every secret life that we live. You know what? Ever since I grew up, I was taught na June, you have to be a good person. June, you have to follow the Ten Commandments. You have to follow God's law to a T and really follow it without failing. And eventually, your good works, hopefully, will allow you to go to heaven. But then, Paul clarified to us, para saan bang God's law? God's law lets us know what God wants. God's law lets us know what is right. God's law let us know that we have no excuse. And looking at the Ten Commandments alone, despite all the other commandments, but look at the Ten Commandments alone, we realized, "Lord, I cannot do this." When Jesus Christ said, "If you look at another woman with lust in your eyes, you already committed adultery. Who among you have not committed adultery?" So knowing that, we have no excuse. And knowing God's law, it lets us know that the entire world is guilty before God. And it lets us know how sinful we are. And Paul summarizes everything in this verse. No one, not you, not me, not Pastor Mark, will ever be made right with God by doing what the law commands. And this is where we were as we end chapter 3, verse 20. And my dear brothers and sisters, let me tell you, looking at God's wrath, God's judgment, God's abandonment, and God's law, which we looked up to but realized will not really help us. It's a very, very dark world facing all of us. And it seems like, ganun ba yon? I mean, I cannot be saved by being good, by doing good, by being morally good? You see, Paul said, "All people, whether Jews or Gentiles, are under the power of sin. And no one is righteous, not even one." My friends, if we will end here, then there is no gospel. There is no good news. There is no hope. But, but now, tonight, there is a reason to celebrate as we read God's word, as he told Paul to write in the Book of Romance. But now, there's a time, and a place, and a way, and a reason to have joy, hope, realize love wins at last, and blessings, and hallelujah, and there's a chance. For we start with this verse. But now, God has shown us a way to be made right with Him without keeping the requirements of the law. As was promised in the writings of Moses and the prophets long ago, we are made right with God by placing our faith in Jesus Christ. And this is true for everyone who believes, no matter who you are, rich, poor, drug addict, rapist, morally right, whoever you are, as long as you place your faith. And my friends, as I said, in my Facebook page, in our message to you, this is the cornerstone of our faith. So tonight, there's only three words I'd like to remember. Christ alone, faith alone, and grace alone. My friends, can you help me? It's a difficult task. Can you pray with me and can you pray for me? Lord Father, who am I to share this wonderful news? Who am I, Father, that I will be your mouthpiece to the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ in our salvation? Lord, I'm not worthy, but you chose me to speak for you tonight. So Lord, may the Holy Spirit fill me. May the people hear your words, not just with their ears, but with their hearts. And may their minds be cleared, and may they understand fully the joyous news of the gospel, that it is only through Christ and through faith and through grace alone that we can be saved. And Lord, our hearts tonight are just filled with gratefulness. In Jesus mighty name, we pray, amen. So are you ready? Are your hands ready to get a grasp on what we're talking about? So first, we're going to talk about faith alone. I mean, it's so clear in the verse, right? "We are made right with Him without keeping the requirements of the law. We are made right with God by placing our faith in Jesus Christ." Sa Tagalog, ang ganda-ganda ng pagkasabi. Ito'y hindi sa pamamagitan ng pagsunod sa kautusan. Kung hindi, ang magiging matuwid sa mata ng Diyos ay sa pamamagitan ng panampalataya kay Hesukristo. What a liberating message. All of us who tried our best to fulfill God's law and failed, realize now that the only way that we can be made right is if we believe in the things and everything that our Lord Jesus Christ has made. When I was reviewing for this talk and I was listening to our source, there's a beautiful, beautiful information that I'd like to share to you, my friends. You know, this verse, "Faith in Jesus Christ," in Greek, is actually a very, very short word. Pistis Christu, faith Jesus Christ. So actually, there's no preposition, walang in. But in the old rendition of the Bible, let's look at King James Version. I find that this is such a more complete, more beautiful view of how our salvation works through faith. Because you know what? In the King James Version, this is how it was written. "Even in the righteousness of God, which is by faith of Jesus Christ, unto all and upon all them that believe; for there is no difference." My friends, this is such a wonderful truth. And I do believe that we are saved by our faith in Jesus Christ. But it is so, so much more rich and fruitful and so much blessed to realize that our salvation is not only through our faith in Jesus, but actually sets and rests on the truth that our salvation is through the faith of Jesus Christ alone. What do I mean by that? What is the difference? Now, when I say it's the faith of Jesus Christ, because only our Lord Jesus Christ had the faith that could save. For he lived a perfectly sinless, faithful life from his birth, through his childhood, through his ministry, and even unto death. His faith in God and God's plan was perfect. So it's not only his faith in God, but his faithfulness in everything that he did. His obedience was the perfect example that we, not one of us, cannot attain. No man and no woman is sinless, except one, our Lord Jesus Christ. And it is this faith, this faith that he showed us, that we rest our trust and belief in, that we will be saved. For you see, the righteousness God has provided is that which Jesus Christ accomplished, a righteousness based upon his person and his work. And if you look at it this way, if we realize, you know, even your faith, even your faith does not come from you. Even your faith comes from the faith and is based and established on the faith of our Lord Jesus Christ. Knowing that, we should be humbled, my friends. You see, when we look at our memory verse, "For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith." You know, sometimes we ask, ano ba ibig sabihin ng faith to faith? Some people will say, "From beginning of our faith till our death, we are saved by faith," or "Everything that we do is by faith." But you know what? Knowing that we are also saved by the faith of our Lord Jesus Christ, this can take on a different meaning, a deeper meaning, which is this. The righteousness of God is revealed from the faith of Jesus Christ to our faith in Him. Why can this be true? Because it says there, "The righteous man shall live by faith." Who among us are righteous? There's only one righteous. There's only one. And that's our Lord Jesus Christ. And it is his life of faith that we are saved. So my friends, we are saved by faith alone, faith in our Lord Jesus Christ, faith of our Lord Jesus Christ. So it means it's only through Jesus Christ alone that we can be saved. But the third most important part of this is this. It is free, grace alone. Sabi dito ni Paul, "All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God and are justified by his grace as a gift through the redemption that is in Christ Jesus." My friends, this is why this is just a joyous message for me to share. All of these things na pinaghihirapan natin, sino sa inyo ang pagod na pagod na na maging mabait? Sino sa inyo na talagang, "Lord, I want to be good and perfect for you today, but I failed?" Today, Lord, nagalit ako sa asawa ko, or today, nagalit ako sa highway dun sa nag-cut sa akin, or Lord, today, I lied. When people ask me, "How are you?", and I say, "I'm okay, but I'm not okay." That's a lie. But many times, every day, we want to be perfect for the Lord. Sino na ang pagod sa inyo dyan? Because this is what it means to fall short of the glory of God. None of your good works, none of your religion, and none of your morality can raise yourself up to the standards of a perfect, righteous, sinless, holy God. You see, Paul said to the one who works, 'Yung naghihirap, the wages are not credited as favor. It's not a free gift. It is sueldo. But to the one who does not work, but truly just rests on the fact that he believes in Jesus Christ's work. And if it is God who made this, his faith will be credited as righteousness. My friends, faith alone, Jesus Christ alone, a free gift by grace alone. Let us move on. Paul goes on to say, "It is Jesus Christ whom God displayed publicly as a propitiation." There's two things I'd like to talk about here. I mean, Jesus could have just died and saved us. Didn't have to be dying on the cross, did it? Because God purposefully displayed the suffering of our Lord Jesus Christ publicly as a propitiation. Now, this propitiation is a very deep word, and I'd like to boil it down to simple things, simple concepts that we will all understand. Because many people will take this and say, "Ah, you have an angry God. You have a God of wrath. Your God is angry at you because you are a sinner." And all of us are sinners, and that's why God is an angry God. And you know, we have to appease him. Kailangan natin maghandog katulad ng ginagawa ng mga tao noon na hindi naniniwala kay God. All those who would sacrifice even their children to appease an angry God. Well, let me tell you for tonight, that is not our God. So therefore, can I humbly explain the way that I understand it so that we can all understand? God's righteousness, it's not based solely on his wrath. We have to understand three important things about our Lord. God is holy. He will not be with sin. God is holy. He will not be with sin. Number two, God is just. He will have to punish sin. If he will not punish Hitler and anyone else who had sinned in this world, then how can he be just? Nasaan ang hustisia? And number three, God is loving. He will save us from punishment. But how will these three truths work? Because if God accepts our sins and accepts us to heaven as sinful people, then he is not holy. If God does not punish man for his sin, he is not just. If God punishes man for his sin, man will die and go to hell. So where is his love? So my friends, when you look at this and you look at this conundrum, this problem, how will we solve the problem, the equation? Don't worry, God solved it for you, and that is what propitiation means. It is the satisfaction of all of these truths, all of these facts. But it is not just a, a sacrifice to an angry God. This is to satisfy all the truths about our God. How can we reconcile his holiness, his love, and the judge, judgment that na nakapataos sa atin? How will we combine all of that? You know, God saw us and he said, I love you. And I will become the substitute. And God said, I will take the sin of mankind upon myself in agony and blood. And that is the righteousness of our God. He righteously died for us because he has to be righteously judged. Because he's a righteous lover, because he's righteously holy. Friends, that is the propitiation that Jesus da- did for us on the cross. He said, I will take your place. As we go on to the chapter, no? It says here, this was to demonstrate his righteousness because in God's merciful restraint, he let the sins previously committed go unpunished. No? When you were reading this, di ba kayo, ano ibig sabihin nito? Ano mo, what is Paul saying here? Can, can I clarify what he's saying here? You know, before Jesus. Oh, well, let me go back farther. Before Moses, there was no law. So how can all the people before Moses be judged? Or on the other hand, how can all those people be saved? When Jesus is not yet born and has not died on the cross? You see, Paul is telling us here, God is righteous even from the beginning of time unto now. Because the sins that he allowed to happen before the commandments were given to Moses, no? The people who lived before Moses and before Jesus Christ, he let them go unpunished. How can he now judge them? Eh, wala namang ten commandments before then. This is it. That is why Jesus had to die publicly. Because up to now, in this present time, we are also looking into the works of the Lord on the cross. You see, the people in the past were saved because they were looking to the future of the Savior. While we, at the present time, are saved because we are looking back, no, at the cross in the works of the Savior. See, that's how it goes. And because with just one event in mankind, one day that our Lord Jesus Christ came, his light has shone in the past, in the present, and in the future. You see, the death of the Lord Jesus Christ is so powerful. It saved the people before the law was made. And it is saving us now, despite two thousand years ago when he died. And this is such a wonderful way, I mean, which Paul said this, he would be just and the justifier. Ano sinasabi ni Paul dito in simple ways? He is the judge. Si halimbawa, nasa korte ka, may ginawa kang kasalanan malaki, nasa korte ka, 'yung judge nandon. He's going to judge you. But God is so wonderful. He said, anak, I will judge you, but I will serve the sentence. You see, he is the judge, but he also justifies us. And that is why we should praise and worship our Lord Jesus Christ, who did this all for us, from beginning to end, through his faith. Aren't your hearts singing for the Lord? Aren't your hearts joyful and grateful to this wonderful God who died for you on the cross? So therefore, knowing, knowing all of this, may ipagyaya bang ba kayo? Can we boast that we have done anything to be accepted by God? So again, let me, let me summarize what I've all been saying, as Paul summarized it. We are made right with God through faith and not by obeying the law. We cannot boast. So my friends, can I give you a little quiz? So who is righteous? A millionaire who gives millions of donations for the poor, spent all his life helping others, but does not believe God? Or a very moral and upright person, but does not believe Jesus' work at the cross is enough? A very sincere and devout religious person, whatever religion he has, who believes rituals, baptism, and his religion is necessary to be saved? What about a circumcised Jew who imperfectly tries to obey all rules and regulations, but still does not know the Messiah? A drug addict and previous sex offender who believes only Jesus can save him from his sins and is trying his best to stop taking drugs to please God? And lastly, a Christian, quote unquote, who serves the ministry and prayed the sinner's prayer ten years ago, but up to now still secretly leads a very sinful life, womanizing, tax cheating, et cetera. Now, if you have heard what I've said, you would know the answer. Who is righteous? Paul goes on to say, the same God that saved the Jews and their religion, no? Is the same God who sur- who saved the Gentiles and their own religion. Gentiles also, since indeed God will justify the circumcised by faith and the uncircumcised through faith. Is one, only one God. All the path for salvation is through this truth. But let me tell you one thing, brothers and sisters. All other religion does not work this way. All religion. Now, you can, you can talk to me if you want to later, but all religion is man's attempt to reach God. While the saving grace that we preach tonight is God's initiative to reach man. All religion focuses on man's works while saving grace on God's gift. All religion is, you have to do this, you have to do that, you have to do this, you have to do that. Saving grace said, it is done. As Jesus died on the cross, he said, it is perfect. It is finished. All religion is merit. Saving grace is unmerited. We don't deserve this. And all religion looks into justice and legalism, while saving grace is justice and grace. As we end the chapter on Romans three, Paul said, do we then overthrow the law? Ganun ba? Eh, di wala na natin sundan ng batas. Sabi niya, by no means. On the contrary, we uphold the law. So Paul, ano ba? Ano ba talaga? Obey the Lord? Dun nat obey the law? No? We will explain this deeper and deeper as we go through the book of Romans. But for now, I'd just like to, to say this. Do you remember this? I showed you a while ago. No matter how much good works you have, you cannot preach God. No matter what religion or how religious you are, you cannot preach God. No matter how a moral person you are, you cannot preach God. But let me tell you, you all fall short of the glory of God. But with Jesus, with Jesus' work, you can. In fact, let me invite you. If you invite Jesus in your life and he's part of your life, in every nook and cranny of your life, you will justify the law. And anything that you fail in, Jesus will take care of it. Because he already saved you and removed all your sins when he died on the cross. So as we, as we talk about this, no, Paul was kind enough to give us one example. Sige, so 'yung mga nakikinig, baka may nagsasabi, totoo ba 'yan, Dokdun? Ah? Totoo ba 'yung sinasabi? Well, Paul gave us an example as we go to chapter four, no? He gave Abraham as an example of salvation by faith and grace. You know, Paul is so intelligent in the way he gives his argument, no? Let us see, why did Paul choose Abraham? Bakit siya? You see, Paul, Abraham was the man from the Old Testament. Ibig sabihin, wala pang ten commandments nun, at wala pa si Jesus nun. In fact, wala pa 'yung religion na Judaism noon. In fact, he was the father, no, of that faith. The problem is, the Jews look up to Abraham as the most righteous Jew. And it is his goodness, no, 'yung, 'yung, 'yung kabaitan, 'yung obedience ni Abraham was the one that saved him. And Paul gave us this example to fully understand, no, no, that's not the truth, no? You see, if you read the book of Romans, chapter four, we can divide it into three portions. Verses one to eight is, Abraham was justified by faith, not works. Now, as Paul goes on to expound on this idea, he said, Abraham, you know, you know Abraham? Sabi niya, he, he started the Jewish nation. But what did he discover about his relationship with God? He said, if his good works had made him acceptable to God, he would have had something to boast about. But the Bible clearly states this. Abraham believed God, and God counted him as righteous because of his faith. You see, Abraham was righteous not because of his good works. God wa- Abraham was righteous because he believed God. When I talk about good works, can I clarify it a little bit, no? The Israelites believed that Abraham was the most moral person, or one of the most moral person. That his goodness is par excellence, and his obedience is unquestionable. But you know, that's not true. You know that Abraham sinned, di ba? Di ba naglie siya about Sarah? Because he didn't want to be killed? And then, he, he committed adultery, no, by, because he doubted for a while that he will have a son. So he had to go into his servant and sire a child. See, if you look at that, Abraham is not a perfect person in himself. And many people will say this, abay, ang dami namang ginawang mabuti ni Abraham. Kumpira naman sa kaunting kasalanan niya. But that is exactly the point. The law, commandments, obeying that will not save you because even if you have a one percent sin in your life, that's still not the one hundred percent sinlessness that the Lord requires, for he is holy. The next part of the chapter is Romans four, nine to seventeen. And this time, Paul argues that Abraham was justified by grace, not law. No? As we read the verse in chapter six, in verse sixteen, so the promise is received by faith. It is given as a free gift. Again, there it is, grace. And we are all certain to receive it whether or not we live according to the law of Moses. If we have faith like Abraham. You see, grace is most important. It's a free gift. It is not living according to the law of Moses. So Dokdun, ano ibig sabihin ba ng law of Moses? You see, the law of Moses summarizes, no, the commandments, the mosaic law, the mosaic covenant, the ordinances that you read in the Bible, the rules of conduct that we all go through in our own religion. You see, it says here, our salvation is through faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. It's not something that you earn, and it's not obeying the law which makes you free. Paul goes on to say, now is this blessing only for the Jews or is it also for the uncircumcised Gentiles? Well, we have been saying that Abraham was counted as righteous by God because of his faith. How did this happen? Naging righteous ba siya? Bago siya na circumcise? Or pagkatapos niyang na circumcise? Paul said, clearly, God accepted Abraham before he was circumcised. Dokdun, bakit ba tayo nag-uusap ng tuli dito? Well, you know, the Jews believe that to be circumcised is to be accepted into the family of God. To be circumcised is a way for salvation. So therefore, circumcision now becomes an example of the law that many of us still follow. No, circumcision represents the rituals that we believe in, the sacrifices that we do. And many times, the, the religion that we do also is represented by circumcision. But Paul is clear here, no, that before rituals, before baptism, you know, many believe that baptism is a way for salvation, but Paul is very clear here. The salvation of Abraham was even before circumcision. Circumcision was a sign that Abraham already had faith and that God had already accepted him and declared him to be righteous, even before he was circumcised. You see, all the good works will follow. But the first and most important route for salvation is your faith in Jesus Christ and to accept that. Clearly, God's promise to give the whole earth to Abraham and his descendants was based not on his obedience to God's law. Remember that, it is not his obedience to God's law wherein the promise was given, but on a right relationship with God that comes by faith. My friends, this is such a very important verse. I'd like you to remember as you go through your walk with the Lord. It is not your religion, it is not your works, it is not your morality. It is a right relationship with the Lord that comes by faith. God looks in the heart. And God knows you. Do you know him by heart? You see, sabi dito, the whole earth was promised to Abraham and his descendants. But then it goes on to say, those who has the faith of Abraham are his descendants. So therefore, we are also inheritors of the earth. God's promise is only for those who obey the law. Is that true? Then faith is not necessary. Di ba, kung may, kung may obedience to the law, na importante to be saved, eh, kailangan pa ba ang faith? And the promise is pointless. And Paul goes on to say, the law always brings punishment on those who try to obey it. You cannot obey the law. If you want to fulfill the law, then you remove the law from the equation. And lastly, huh, I am sorry, it's been a long talk, but I hope you are blessed, no? Lastly, uh, the chapter, uh, verse, chapter four, verse eighteen to twenty-five, sorry, it's not, that's not Romans eight, but Romans four, eighteen to twenty-five. Abraham's salvation was by divine power, not human effort. You see, Abraham, even though there was no reason for hope, why was there no reason for hope? He's one hundred years old. Lord, paano pa ko magiging tatay? One hundred na ako. Sabi niya, and my wife, my wife's womb is as good as dead, no? How can I have hope? But ah, that's what's good about Abraham. Even though physically, humanely, it cannot be done, he believed in the divine power of the Lord. In fact, Abraham never, never wavered in believing God's promise. In fact, his faith grew stronger, and in this, he brought glory to God. And my friends, this is again another- And my friends, this is again another very important fact. Why should we be saved by faith? Because by law, you glorify yourself. But through faith in God, we bring glory to our Lord. Now, I'd just like to say a little something about God's promise. No, God's promise to Abraham were four things. He promised him a land that he will go to, he promised him a son, he promised him a nation. And he promised Abraham a Savior. Let me tell you, when Abraham died, how many of the promises did he see? He only saw a son. But Abraham died with faith in his heart, that all of your promises, Lord, will come true. He was fully convinced God is able to do whatever he promises. So therefore, as I wrap up our talk tonight, as we end the chapter four of the book of Romans, sabi ni Paul, you know what? The story of Abraham and this letter I'm giving you, it was recorded for your benefit, for yours and mine. See, it's a benefit. For God has promised us also something, the same way that he promised Abraham. And Abraham died without seeing all the promises came true. But his faith till the end is complete. Therefore, I challenge you, my brothers and sisters, this promise that God has given us, we may not see in our lifetime. But Paul says this, if we believe in God, the one who raised Jesus, our Lord, from the dead, he was handed over to die because of our sins, and he was raised to life to make us right with God. If we would remember that promise, that God promised to save you, if you put your faith and trust in the Lord Jesus Christ as a free gift, you will be saved. My question to you, my brothers and sisters, is this. Would you believe these promises of God? No? As I summarize all of these things that we've mentioned from chapter one to chapter four, we see four words also. We realize sin is the greatest killer of everyone. We're all afraid of COVID. But mortality rate with COVID is only two percent. But many of us are not afraid of sin, which carries a hundred percent mortality rate. And then we talked about justice. We have a just God that has to punish and has to bless, depending on the life that you live. But we all know that we serve a loving God, a God who solved our problem for us, something that we cannot do. And that is the offering of forgiveness. Church, there is only one place in the world that four of these words collide. That four of these words are seen. And my brothers and sisters, it is only in the cross. Only in the cross was sin forgiven, and God's righteousness was justified, all out of love for you and me. So our heads in prayer. Hey, Lord God, our hearts are singing with joy. Because as we realize the depravity of man, how we cannot do anything to save our lives, no matter how much we try, no matter what we do, we are destined to die, for we are all under the power of sin. But we are joyful, Lord, because you gave us a way, you gave us hope, you gave us a chance, you gave us the Lord Jesus Christ, whose faith has shown righteousness. The sinless life that you demand. And only he, and he alone, can offer himself as a sacrifice so that we can be saved. All glory to your name, Lord Jesus Christ. It is your love and your goodness that saved each and every one of us. Now, if it's your first time here, or you have come to this place many times, but have not accepted Jesus as your Savior, and you are tired, and you know that you cannot do it, tonight may be the night that you can be free from the bondage of sin. As you pray to the Lord Jesus Christ, Lord Jesus Christ, I believe in you. I believe in your death, in your life, and in your resurrection. I believe you died for me, Lord Jesus Christ, and in that faith, in that faith, I will continue on with my life. I accept you as my Savior, Lord, but not only my Savior, but my King in my life. And I repent from my sins, and I will try my best to obey you, Lord. But I know that when I fail, you are there to help me stand up again. May the Holy Spirit come to my life, and may this day be a start of a day that I give you glory in everything that I do. Thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, in the power and the glory of our Lord. In his name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.